Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay because of technical issues. Welcome to the special board meeting of the Holden Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, July 28, 2022. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have most trustees attending in person with a few participating remotely. In order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. For those in the boardroom, please remember to turn on your desk mics on when you speak. For those attending remotely, please remember to turn on your microphone and cameras when you are recognized to speak and turn off your cameras or mics otherwise. Trustees, please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the floor, you will be muted. Trustees also, please note, we have legal counsel from Miller Thompson, Ms. Timoshenko, and parliamentarian Kapoor are in attendance. Land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and oath of citizenship. The first order of business, I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holden, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Many First Nations and the Maiti.
On the lands of the Anishinaabe.
The Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Maiti.
These lands surround these nations.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Callous and solid.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
If since trustee Master Yama is not online, I shall start with the opening prayer. So at this meeting, I would like to keep all our students, families, teachers, staff, and friends in mind as they refresh and rejuvenate over the summer. Please join me in the sign up of faith. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Lord God, Creator of all things, guide our steps and strengthen our hearts during this month of summer and vacation days. Give us refreshment of mind and body. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Please stand up for the national anthem and the oath of citizenship. First order of business is the motions adopted in camera. There was a motion adopted at a July 26, 2022 special in-camera board meeting appointing Jeff Crowell as the to the position of interim director of education. Congratulations, Superintendent Crowell. Moving on to the next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have? I see trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to get clarification on this meeting happening, that there's two special board meetings in one week and that we were given such short notice about this meeting and they're not urgent matters, that it's not appropriate.
Trustee Carabella, I can start answering and then I'll jump to the parliamentarian Kapoor. As per our bylaws, we have a special board meeting. It's defined there how many hours in advance the notice to be given. The documents were submitted well in advance. Notice was given well in advance. The bylaws do not specify the number of meetings per week to clarify that. And so I will call in parliamentarian Kapoor at this point in time to add on to what I have said. Parliamentarian Kapoor.
Hello, Chair, and good evening. You are correct. Bylaw 14-1 gives the chair the authority to call a special meeting. There is not a restriction on when the chair may call a special meeting or how frequently. There is a requirement that notice be given at least 24 hours previous to the time at which such meeting is to take place. That's bylaw 4.2.3, and I understand that such notice was provided.
To parliamentarian Kapoor, trustee Carabella, do you have any other question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I understand there is legislation that says you cannot bring allegations of code of conduct within 90 days of the election. And as of today, we are 89 days away from elections and less from advanced polling. This meeting is in contravention to the municipal act.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Again, I will start with this and then we have we have legal here and I'll jump to legal at this point in time. Today is not the day the allegations are being brought. The allegations are brought forth. And it's in the report. You have the report with you. So I don't agree with that, but again, let me pass this on to legal to clarify. Ms. Timoshenko. Ms. Timoshenko.
My apologies, I'm having a little bit of technical problems as well. Sorry about that. The municipal act code of conduct provisions don't actually apply with respect to the Education Act trustee code of conduct, in my opinion. There are school boards that have adopted the same timeframe as is adopted in the municipal act, but it's not necessary and it's not in your policy.
Thank you, Ms. Timoshenko. Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Mr. Chair, I do have another follow-up because I understood Ms. Jimmichenko said that she believes that, if I understood correctly, that the municipal act has to be in sync with the Education Act or she implied it didn't. So that's one question. And then regarding the municipal act, though, there is a point 20 that says that rules that apply during the regular election, that the following rules apply during the period of time starting on nomination day for a regular election and set out in section 31 of the Municipal Elections Act 1996, an end on voting day in the regular election as set out in section 5 of the act. There shall be no requests for an inquiry about whether a member of council or of a local board has contravened the code of conduct applicable to the member. And the commissioner shall not report to the municipality or local board about whether, in his or her opinion, a member of council or of a local board has contravened the code of conduct applicable to a member. So I'd like clarification on that that section about the nomination days which started May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. You yourselves, the request for allegation. Today is not the request for allegation and you have the entire report in your hand, the details of the dates wherein the request was put forth and all information was provided. Entire sequence is detailed in the report. So you yourself have stated that it cannot be within so many days. Today is not the date came forth. It came back quite some time. And you were part of the process, trustee Carabella. So.
So can I sort of, sorry to interject through you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, a local board does not include a district school board under the municipal act?
Thank you, Mr. Timoshenko. Thank you, trustee Carabella. If you have no other questions, we shall move on to the approval of the agenda. May I have?
And Mr. Chair.
I see your hand up now. Sorry. Go ahead. You have a question?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to legal counsel, Ms. Timoshenko. A few meetings back, you did mention that OCSDA did recommend we not have any code of conduct hearings during the election period. Is that true? Does my memory serve me right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that was my understanding that OCSDA had suggested to school boards that they could include a provision in their policies that gave a hiatus. Some school boards have, others haven't, in my understanding.
Follow-up question, Mr. Chair. Ms. Timoshenko, that being the case, when does the election period start under OCSDA's recommendation?
So my comment was with respect to whether or not school boards should adopt the same kind of hiatus as councils do, municipal councils do. They would prop up my my assumption would be that they would probably follow the same timeframe that nominations and the process that would be followed for councils. But as I said, the municipal act does not consider a school board, a local board. So it would be a timeframe that a school board would want to fashion for itself or could fashion for itself if you were doing so.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, seems to me I remember the date of August 19th being mentioned at the last time we asked this question. Since that is the closing of nominations. Ms. Timoshenko, would you still consider that the date recommended by OCSDA?
I believe I said this at the meeting previously, that I wasn't perfectly recollecting the date, but it is August. I can't recall if I said the 17th or the 19th. I believe one of the trustees actually corrected me in terms of the date because I had looked at it for the purposes of that meeting. And, you know, subject to subject to being incorrect about the specific date, it is that week in August. So my apologies that I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's the date that the nominations close.
And Mr. Chair, if you just indulge me, one further question. Ms. Timoshenko, in your opinion, would you recommend this board follow that same date for closures of all code of conduct?
Mr. O'Brien, that's question is not valid at this point in time. The reason is we are talking about the agenda. We are talking about the approval of the agenda. That's a different question for a different point in time, trustee O'Brien.
So I can ask it later on in the meeting, Mr. Chair.
And it's germane to the topic. Thank you, Ms. Timoshenko. We are talking about the approval of the agenda. Seeing no other questions here, may I ask for a mover? Moved by trustee Murphy. May I ask for a second there? Trustee Ochanchenada seconded. I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Ochanchenada.
In favor.
Trustee Guza.
In favor.
Washe Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
I'm opposed.
And trustee Bowie. Trustee Master Yama. Trustee Tokiva. And trustee Duarte is in favor. You have six in favor, one opposed. The motion carries. The agenda is approved. Moving on to the next order of business, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to the next order of business, which is action items. We have one action item for tonight, which is the code of conduct. I will start with the discussion and explain some ground rules and I'll present. To start with, there was first I'll explain the ground rules tonight so that everybody is very clear about it. So we have an allegation of trustee code of conduct which is brought forth by Burlington trustee Agnew versus Opel trustee Carabella. So tonight, trustee Carabella will be provided with an opportunity to respond to the report orally. Once the motion is seconded, if there is a motion and seconded, trustee Carabella will not be able to participate in the discussions or deliberations or in the vote. Since these allegations do not engage any personal information, you can remain while the debate and the vote occurs, but you will not be able to participate. I hope this is clear. So moving on with.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order.
Mr. O'Brien, you said. The point of order.
Shit, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the policy. And I do believe it says that a trustee who is alleged to have breached the code of conduct shall not vote on any of the resolutions. But I don't see anywhere in the policy where it says the trustee cannot participate in the discussion, unless I'm not seeing something, Mr. Chair.
I've got legal advice and we have legal present here to give us any additional information on this very topic. If you want the explanation, I shall ask legal to explain. Ms. Timoshenko.
Yes, so thank you through you, Mr. Chair. With respect to vote, in my interpretation of that with respect to the meeting of the board of trustees is from the time that the motion is seconded. So the deliberation that occurs during consideration of the vote is included in that. And the reason I, that is my opinion, is because during a deliberative process that has a consequence in administrative law, the individual who is subject to that consequence has a bias and doesn't participate in the deliberative process, which is essentially what you would be doing when you're considering whether or not to pass the motion or not. An analogy that I would make is, for example, with respect to student discipline. So prior to the trustees actually removing themselves to discuss whether or not a student should be disciplined, they can hear from staff, they can hear from the student, they can ask questions of the individual, the student or staff, and they're allowed to make, the student and the staff can make submissions to the trustees. But once the trustees have decided that they're going to make the decision, neither staff nor the student can participate in their deliberation. So that deliberation is done just between the trustees in order to make a decision about whether or not the student should be, in the case of student discipline, expelled or in the case of suspension appeal, to uphold the suspension. So this is the same type of deliberative process that is occurring as a student discipline matter. So trustee Carabella would have an opportunity, if she chooses, to provide an oral submission or a written one for that matter. However, once the motion, if it is seconded, once that occurs, then the deliberation is just between the trustees. And that's because she is the subject of the issue and has a bias, obviously, with respect to the matter.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien, you had a point of order, which I ruled on that. I provide you with new information and that's the end of the point of order. So.
Mr. Chair, I appeal that point of order.
You appeal what? I have ruled in your favor and you are appealing me ruling in your favor?
No, I'm appealing, let me ask another question, Mr. Chair.
Ruler, you've got to raise another point of order, trustee O'Brien.
Just one other question, Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me.
Sorry, trustee O'Brien, I'm not understanding your, you have a question or you have a point of order?
Question, clarification for Ms. Jimmicho's opinion.
I don't think I can allow that at this point in time. You raised the point of order. I ruled on that. I provided you information. We move on.
I'm appealing that, Mr. Chair.
There's no appeal. There's no point of order. I'm not sure.
Parliamentary opinion on whether or not I can appeal that, Mr. Chair.
I'm not, there's no point of order. I've not ruled on anything.
Are you denying me a parliamentary opinion on whether or not I can kill that point of order? Ruler, Mr. Chair. I can't hear you, Mr. Chair. Point of privilege. I see your lips moving and I hear no sound.
Trustee O'Brien, can you hear me?
I cannot, Mr. Chair.
You raised a point of privilege. Please state your point of privilege.
Oh, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. We shall now move on. I saw trustee Carabella's hand up. It's no longer up there, so I shall continue.
I have no appeal to your ruling on whether or not I can ask another question, Mr. Chair. Just hold clear on that, Mr. Chair.
There was no ruling on that. There was no point of order. The point was answered and closed.
Just wanted a parliamentary opinion, Mr. Chair, whether or not I can ask another question? Can I ask at least that, Mr. Chair?
You have a question? Okay, I'll grant that to you at this point in time. But remember, presenting the action item, you're asking a question, specific question to the action item. Go ahead, trustee O'Brien. I'll give that to you.
Follow-up question to the Ms. Timoshenko. Ms. Tim, I appreciate that opinion. Thank you for clarifying that. Just wondering why that's not stated in the Education Act or our policy?
So I don't know why it's not stated in your policy. With respect to the Education Act, I would argue that it doesn't need to be. It's not necessary because when you're looking at deliberative processes, the administrative law principles would apply. I don't think it's necessary for the act to actually specify that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timoshenko. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Brian, so let me present the action item which I talked about. I laid the ground rules. I hope everybody understands that. So once again, to clarify where I started with, an allegation of a breach of the trustee code of conduct, policy I 36 was brought to the attention of the chair of the board by Burlington trustee Agnew against Opel trustee Carabella. All trustees were provided with the allegations as received. Trustee Carabella was provided with the allegations and a reasonable time to respond was provided. Trustee Carabella has responded and the response was shared with all trustees. As per policy I 36, if an alleged breach is brought to the attention of the board, the board shall make inquiries into the matter and shall, based on the inquiries, determine whether there was a breach. Accordingly, an inquiry was conducted by the chair of the board, that's me, and the detailed report was circulated to all trustees by secure email. The board of trustees will now determine according to bylaw 4.3.7, policy I 36, and the results of the inquiry, if a breach of code of conduct occurred and if any sanctions need to be imposed. If the board determines that a trustee has breached any code of conduct, the board may impose one of the following sanctions, which is verbal warning by the chair, letter of warning, a censure of the trustee, barring the trustee from attending all or part of a meeting of the board or a meeting of a committee of the board or barring the trustee from sitting on one or more committees of the board for the period of time specified by the board. I have presented to trustees the process followed. I shall now open up the floors to trustees to ask questions of general nature or make a determination. At this point in time, before we go there, I'd like to provide trustee Carabella with her opportunity to provide a verbal or written report about the, a statement about the report presented, which she has. So trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will respond to the allegations, which I refute. As an HCDSB trustee, I'm an elected official and have regular communications with my constituents and supporters through a newsletter sent by email. Anyone who doesn't wish to receive my messages is free to unsubscribe at any time. The allegations against me are clearly politically motivated in an attempt to smear my good name, sanction me before the elections, and try to intimidate me from communicating with my many supporters and ratepayers. Chair, I've got a point of order.
Trustee Carabella is the point of order. So when we call a point of order, I'd like all trustees to respect, respectfully stop talking and listen to the point of order. Washe Agnew, please state your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Clearly, the comments that are being made by trustee Carabella are disparaging in their nature. She's implying intent and other comments that were there that would, again, actually be against our trustee code of conduct, so I would ask her to refrain from speaking in such a manner.
Thank you, Washe Agnew. I'll rule on that. Your point of order is well taken, trustee Carabella.
Mr. Chair, I appeal that decision, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, your ruling, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I appeal.
So trustee Carabella, I think I made my.
Mr. Chair, I appeal your ruling on trustee Agnew.
Trustee O'Brien, you do not have the floor. I'm going to ask you once again.
Mr. Chair, I, point of order.
I am answering to a point of order. Your point of order can wait. I will come back to you.
You rule, Mr. Chair, on that point of order and I'm appealing your ruling.
I have not finished my ruling.
Oh, I thought you had, Mr. Chair. My apologies.
Back to you. Trustee Carabella, I have given you an opportunity and I've stated very clearly that you have a few minutes to talk about the report that was presented to you by secure email.
Mr. Chair, you have not. I appeal as your ruling on trustee Agnew's point of order.
Trustee Carabella, you have been given a few of the opportunity to talk about the report which was presented to you. Once again, you know the content of the report. I'm going to ask you to stick to the report itself. Let's not wander around and talk about something different. Let's talk about your thoughts about a report and how you'd like to respond to that report. Am I clear?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am speaking now in my defense, which I'm allowed, and I will respond to the allegations in this report.
And I will respond to the allegations in this report in the way I see I need to do as my defense. I refute all the allegations against me. I'm a Canadian citizen and I have the right to free speech. This does not end because I'm an elected official. It is within my rights as a trustee and elected official to communicate with my ratepayers and supporters. I am very clear in my newsletter that the views expressed in these newsletters are my own and that I do not speak on behalf of the Halton Catholic District School Board. I relate vote outcomes and quote things that are said at public board meetings, all factual information that anyone can find out. As an elected official representing ratepayers, I have the right to make notices of motions. And these motions do not need to be liked by everyone. However, countless ratepayers are very supportive of my work and have said it has elevated their hopes in the HCDSB. My motions are not a waste of board resources nor a waste of time, as has been alleged. Moreover, I have a duty and a right to raise motions of interest to ratepayers, regardless of how much other trustees who disagree with the policy of the motion. And if they're opposed, they get their chance to speak and vote for or against the motion. That is their right, just as it is my right and duty to present the motions I believe are important to our community. To oppose and thwart my right to both free speech but also to present motions is fundamentally undemocratic. Our meetings are poorly managed, long, drawn out, as noted by many in the community and press. It does not have to be this way, but the solution is certainly not to remove people you disagree with, silence them, and try to keep them from their duties as an elected office holder. Let's put today's meeting in context of the meeting a few days ago called to remove another trustee. Trustee Vincent Tomasi, who is on medical leave, was not provided proper notice of the meeting yesterday. Although he was.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Agnew, please state your point of order.
Whether, what happened two days ago with respect to trustee Ian Tomasi is not relevant to the matter that we are discussing this evening. And as such, I don't think that it should be spoken to. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Your point of order is well taken. Trustee Carabella, I think I was very clear in the beginning and when I explained the ground rules, and I hope you did understand the ground rules. If you did not understand something, I would believe you would ask a question, but I see we are straying from the, from what we are doing here right now. You are speaking about something which is irrelevant. You have been given the opportunity to speak to the report, but I'm seeing that we are going all around the place here. We're not talking about what we are supposed to talk. Now, this is my last time that I'm giving the opportunity once again, trustee Carabella. Please stick to responding to the report. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this brings up a point of why I'm bringing that up is to respond to the allegations against me. I will just. I will say.
Go ahead.
Well, what I'm saying is the process. Okay, well. So. I'm talking about having the right to defend ourselves, and I also have the right to defend myself. And my mother, who was in front of a communist, who, well, in front of a fake court in a communist country, where I was born and lived, and I lived through the retelling of many horrible lived experiences of my parents. And I would like to, and they, even when she was in a court situation with, they let her defend herself with her own words and didn't mute her and didn't let, and let her express herself. So I would like to continue. Tonight, we are having, we are having more of the same of, and I was given less than forty-eight hours' notice to prepare for today's meeting. Yes, I received the allegations, but I did not know that we were having this special board meeting so quickly on the tails of the other and with very short notice. With, this is not sufficient time to prepare. The haste is not due to an actual emergency. There is no emergency. Our board has been described as dysfunctional by the media many times. If I am sanctioned tonight, that would make two out of the nine trustees suspended in the same week over non-emergencies. Moreover, I believe these special meetings are being used as political punishment, using these powers to cancel trustees that other members of the board wish to silence is tyranny. This is not a court.
Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, do you hear me? Trustee Carabella, do you hear me?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hear you.
So there's a point of order.
I'm finished my statement. Thank you.
There's a point of order here. Vice Chair Agnew, can you? Sorry, trustee Guzzo, say the point of order.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Comments that are disparaging against other trustees continue to come up during trustee Carabella's. I have no issue with her trying to defend herself, but she doesn't need to defend herself at the cost of other people sitting around the table.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Your point is well received. Trustee Carabella, I think, and I, and I believe that you have been trying, you cross the line in trying to implicate and be disparaging to trustees. So anyway, you have ended your presentation. Thank you for that, and we shall continue with the discussion. So from this point onwards, trustee Carabella, you will not participate in the discussion or voting. I'm going to pass it on to trustees at this point in time to make a determination on the report. All trustees have a secured copy of the report. And it's up to you, up to trustee now. I see a hand up. Trustee Guzzo, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I was wondering if I could ask a question of legal?
Sure. Go ahead. Ask the question, Mr. Timoshenko. Okay, go ahead, trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. My question really truly is, is just for clarity. When decisions are made at the board table, are they to be upheld by all members, all trustees? And are trustees, how's the word, in dealing with constituents is making reference disparaging comments or making reference to motives of other trustees considered something that is part of the job of dealing with constituents? And this may be a hard question to answer, but I'm hoping you can, I know I see the look on your face. But in part of your job, like if I was to look at it, is part of it talking about trustees' motives or their upbringing or why they vote on things the way they do? Do you see that as part of the role of a trustee in communicating with your constituents?
Mr. Timoshenko.
So fortunately for me, I don't need to wade into that. Because it's, in my opinion, that's not a legal question as much as it is a political one. And whether or not something complies with or is contrary to your code of conduct, I would say is a political decision, not a legal one. Certainly, if something were to reach the point where it was defamatory, that that would be a legal standard that you apply. But whether or not something is considered disparaging or inappropriate, unsupportive, I would argue that those are political considerations for the trustees to decide on.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, trustee Guzzo.
Maybe I can frame it a different way or ask for clarification. I just want to ensure that I'm reading the trustee code of conduct correctly when it pertains to speaking of other trustees and communicating that to outside of the table or making comments on trustees' motives. Whether it be you, Mr. Chair, or Parliamentarian Kapoor.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, would you like to jump in and answer the question?
I'll try, Chair, and my answer will be to quote your own code of conduct. Section four, civil behavior, bullet four states that, sorry, bullet five. Subject to the duty of a trustee under section two eighteen one E of the Education Act to uphold the implementation of any board resolution after it's passed by the board, a trustee may comment on or disagree with a decision taken by the board. A trustee may not make disparaging remarks about another trustee or a group of trustees in expressing such comment or disagreement or speculate on the motives of a trustee or a group of trustees or staff. That is a direct quotation from I thirty-six, HCDSB's Code of Conduct. It is the, it is the determination of the board whether that has been breached or not. If allegations are made, investigation will be done. And then it is the determination of the board whether that has been breached or not. I'm not sure if that, how helpful that was, but that's, but I can answer if there's a follow-up.
That was clear, Parliamentarian Kapoor. Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up. And trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, for the trustees, I have looked at the report and I looked at our chair's comprehensive analysis of it, which I thought was very extensive. And I think it comes down to two simple words. And those are the two simple words that we find in our vision statement, which we as a board unanimously agreed on. And those are the words distinctly Catholic. We are a board which is distinctly Catholic. And I'm looking at the allegations and keeping in mind that trustee Carabella and all trustees, one of their most important jobs, main job, is to hold the board accountable to the multi-year strategic plan. That is our job. That's why she was voted in. And our multi-year strategic plan specifically says we are a board which is distinctly Catholic. We all agree there's not one trustee that did not vote on that. That's right in public record. Now, I'm looking at these and all these allegations, and it seems to me that the majority of them, majority of them have to do with that of accusing trustee Carabella of doing what she was, took an oath to do, hold the board accountable to his multi-year strategic plan of keeping the board distinctly Catholic. Now, we as a board could easily go back and change those two words. We could vote it out. And maybe that is the will of the board. I don't know. But I think we're, we want to have our cake and eat it too. We want to be distinctly Catholic. But when someone holds us accountable to being distinctly Catholic, we get very upset and we make allegations. So I think she's just doing her job.
Brian, there's a point of order. Trustee Guzzo has a point of order. Trustee Guzzo, state a point of order, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I believe trustee O'Brien is implying that members of this board are not distinctly Catholic. And again, that's a breach of the code of conduct. Nobody is to speak of other trustees' motives. We've heard that time and time again.
Mr. Chair, that thought was never on my mind.
Trustee Guzzo, I'm listening to what trustee O'Brien is saying, and I did not get that distinct feeling. Trustee O'Brien was on the border of that. So trustee, I shall give trustee O'Brien to continue. Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you. I apologize if I gave that impression because I know that every trustee on board is doing their best effort to be as Catholic as they can be. But I, as far as the allegations go, which is what we're talking about tonight, I do think that trustee Carabella is attempting to do that in these actions. It may not be the way we want it to be. I certainly don't agree with all her motives or her way of doing it, but I think that's what she's trying to do. So I can't see it being a breach of code of conduct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Once again, that report which was circulated to all trustees in a secure form is confidential as of now. It's up to the board of trustees to determine if that report needs to be made public. So yes, I'll remind everybody to stick to those guidelines. If the will of the board is that the report is made public, then we should, we can do so, and then we can talk freely about it. Once again, reminder to trustees. Moving down the speakers list, we have trustee Johann Chanada. Trustee Johann Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to go back in time. I don't know, maybe almost four years ago, when we all ran to be a public official as a trustee. During that time, we were to uphold governance. We're through a Catholic lens, absolutely. But we're also adhered to our policies. So, so as we veer off into different avenues, it's pretty, to me, in my opinion, we have the facts, we have an investigation, we have a policy, whether we like it or not. Did this report, did these incidences contravene our policy? Yes or no? So we have been given that responsibility as a public official to govern ourselves. So whether you think it's been contravened or not, that's not the point. The point is it is our responsibility, which I personally take very seriously. And I'm sorry if maybe it doesn't end up the way people want it to end up. It's, I apologize for that, but I took this oath very seriously and we're governing ourselves and I take that very seriously. So on that note, I'd like to put a motion forward if I could at this time, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Johann Chanada, can you state your motion?
Yes, I would like to put forth a motion that in my beliefs that trustee Carabella has breached the trustee code of conduct.
Okay. One second. Can we get that to Rosie? Can you put it on screen?
You want me to type it to you, Rosie, or? Do you get it? Yeah.
So we have a mover for that motion. We have trustee Johann Chanada. Moves while the motion is being put on the screen. I'll ask for a second there. May I have a second, please? Murphy. Trustee Murphy seconded it. Give us a second and we'll have that motion up on the screen. Trustee Johann Chanada, you see the motion up on the screen. Is that what you?
The board of trustees find trustee Carabella in breach of the trustee code of conduct policy I thirty-six. Yep, that's exactly it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Johann Chanada, you get five minutes to open up discussion on this motion.
I would like to give him five minutes because this is a very serious function that we're performing right now. However, just to say that. No, I speak. So in my opinion, and I would like to put this forward because I do find that there is a breach of our trustee code of conduct based upon our policy I thirty-six. Really, I have no much, no much more to say on that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johann Chanada. We have a speakers list here, and I'm wondering if the speakers are on this motion. Yeah, Vice Chair Agnew, your hand is up. Is it speak? Okay, Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with trustee Johann Renata. This is not fun for anybody despite any, any opinion of others or questions on motives. This is not fun. Nobody wants to be doing this. We have a trustee code of conduct policy for a reason. I won't and I can't speak to the details of that report because it is not public. I will say that the, that the allegations and the report do outline what the specific concerns are with respect to the trustee code of conduct. They're not referencing disagreements with being Catholic or anything of the sort. They are specific references where there has been an alleged breach of code of conduct with respect to the actions of trustee Carabella. And again, we have to self-govern. We have a job to do, and that's what we're here doing tonight. And again, this isn't for wanting to have an extra meeting. This isn't for wanting to have to do this, but we are, and it's a necessary piece of our job. Thank you. It's it's a necessary piece of our job, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, on speaker list, we have trustee Guzzo, trustee O'Brien, trustee Guzzo, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and before I ask my question, I need to ask for some clarification. I know that the report is not public and we're, we shouldn't be talking about any of the details, however. When trustee Carabella was speaking, she raised a couple of comments that. Could or could not be have been in the report, so. I feel like I I need to ask a question or to make a statement in regards to it, but I want to know that if I, whether or not I can do that. Because it's already been referenced.
So do you have any specific? Can you point us to the specific?
It's general statement at this point. I either counsel will say that, yes, I can make reference to what was talked about. By trustee Carabella or no. But my issue is, is I, and I, and. And I obviously, I understand the point of keeping it. Out of, out of camera, however, when we start to put information out there, there's no way to have a conversation about it. If only.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien, state your point of order.
What a voter is. What trustee Guzzo was saying is not germane. To the subject of. The motion put forward.
Trustee O'Brien, I think trustee O'Brien, trustee Guzzo wanted to talk about this motion. There were some things which he wanted to talk about which are referenced by trustee Carabella in the past. So it is germane to this discussion, so.
Mr. Chair, I feel that.
You'd like to appeal that, okay?
Yes.
So trustee O'Brien appeals.
You're right.
So can I have, you have, you move? May I have a second? May I have a?
Chair Duarte, I have a point of privilege, are you, am I allowed? To vote on appeals or not be involved at all?
Be involved in this trustee Carabella at this point in time.
Thank you.
And for the third. Can I have a second for the appeal? So there is no second, the trustee O'Brien, so your appeal. Will not be considered. Going back to trustee Guzzo, trustee Guzzo, you were asking a question.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, it was just clarifying on whether, again, because we are talking about finding whether or not there is a breach. So can we ask or can I ask legal if I can? Ask questions or make comments in regards to what has already been divulged by trustee Carabella in her defense.
Yes, Mr. Moschenko. Are you there? Go ahead, trustee Guzzo.
Sorry, did you hear my question or do you need me to repeat it?
So my understanding of your question was whether or not you would be. In breach or or. Speaking beyond the parameters of of the meeting if you were to respond to specific. Issues that trustee Carabella raised in her submission and. I I think that's fine. I think. The trustees have the the authority to keep the the report either in public or in in camera. The discussion. Obviously needs to respect that, so if it's in the in the confines of something that. Has been made public, I think you're you're fine to do that. Subject to the trustees passing a motion that they're going to put the the report in public. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, so it it did, and then I got confused by that last bit, so. If it's already been made public because it's already been said. This evening. On this meet, during this meeting. I can ask about that. But we have to pass a motion that the report needs to be made public?
No, that's, I just wanted to clarify that that is within your. Authority as a board. My understanding is that you have not decided to make the report public as a board, so. Comments should be narrowly. Focused on, on. The issue and and like I said, if if trustee Carabella has said something that you're responding to and it's narrow. In it, in your response, then I think that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moschenko, trustee Guzzo, you're the floor.
Thank you and thank you for that. I just want to keep this really clear. This job is not easy. We all work very hard. We all work very hard for our constituents. We all have. And you know what, actually, that's not true, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, I'm going to speak for myself. I work very hard for the students, for the parents of this board. In that. That's what I limit my discussions with. At no point do I think it's not, it it that anybody is saying that you can't talk to your constituents. Nobody is saying that you can't say that you disagree or don't disagree. What you can't do. Is you can't talk about others. And you can't make statements. That have nothing to do with your constituents. Or your views. The fact remains is you want to communicate your constituents, you want to do your job and it's in regards to education. And it's in regards to student success and what's best for our students first and foremost. I don't think anybody would ever question that. This job puts us. In. The limelight, it puts us under scrutiny. Lots of comments are made all the time. But it's whether or not we know when, when we have to draw the line. And that's where we have to decide. So I think it's really clear and I think we need to really emphasize that. Nobody has ever said that you can't talk to your constituents. And that's not what this is about, and I think that needs to be very clear. Without going into details of what's on that report. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Guzzo, on the speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien, trustee O'Brien, you're the floor. Trustee O'Brien.
Chair, could you put me back in the queue, I just want to look up something.
Trustee O'Brien, you're the only person in the queue.
Then. I will just. I'm, as I said earlier, I. Do not think a breach was made. So I will not be supporting this motion, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you trustees, so I do not see any hand up. We have a motion here in front of us, it has been moved by trustee Johann Chanada. And seconded by trustee Murphy. Resolve the board of trustees, find trustee Carabella in breach of the trustee code of conduct. Policy I dash thirty six. I shall now call the devote on the motion in front of us. Trustee. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Johann Chanada, you get to close, I shall call the vote after that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, just quite simply. You know our policy. We know what we can or cannot do, if we decide to do something outside of the policy, there are consequences, thank you.
Thank you trustee Johann Chanada. I've called the vote. And I shall vote on this. Action item, trustee Guzzo, how do you vote?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Pause.
Trustee. Johann Chanada?
In favor.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. We have five. In favor, want to oppose the motion carries. So this is the first part of the. Policy which states that a determination has been made. The next part of the policy, if trustees are interested. Would. Would determine if at all any sanctions need to be applied. If at all. And again, it's the decision of trustees, so. If I see any hands up, I'll proceed. I will wait, otherwise shall proceed. So the second part, as I mentioned, was the board determines if a trustee has reached the code of conduct, we've done that. The sanctions, a couple of sanctions I talked about and I see a couple of hands up here. Trustee Mur. Trustee Johann Chanada, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So unfortunately, due to our findings, I do have a motion I'd like to put on the table. I can send it to Rosie. Would like me to?
Yes, please, please kindly send it, send it to Rosie.
Rosie, I'm going to send it to you now. Pardon, and Andrea? Sorry, be patient, please. Just wait for Rosie to get it up there and. So we'll put it up on the board and then I'll read it, is that what you want to do? Perfect, thank you.
So we have the motion up here, trustee Johann Chanada, is this something that, which looks accurate?
Yeah, yes, it does.
Okay. So may I now ask for a second, we have a motion which is moved by trustee Johann Chanada. May I ask for a second? Murphy. Trustee Murphy seconds. Trustee Johann Chanada, could you read the motion, please?
Yes, I will, whereas it has been determined by board resolution at the July twenty eighth, twenty two thousand and twenty two special board meeting. The trustee Carabella was in breach of the trustee code of conduct policy I thirty six. Whereas the imposition of sanctions is required by board resolution. Being resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board of Trustees imposes sanction as outlined in the Education Act, section two eighteen dot three, dot three, dot three. And H C D S B policy I thirty six, section eleven. By barring trustee Carabella from attending and participating in the following board meetings. The September sixth, twenty twenty two. September twentieth, twenty twenty two and October fourth, twenty twenty two, as well as an issuance of a censure. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Johann Chanada. The motion is table, trustee Johann Chanada, you get to open discussion, you have five minutes.
Thank you, I'm through you, Mr. Chair, to fellow trustees at the board table. Due to the fact that we voted on that there was a breach of code of conduct. And my opinion, as I indicated before. You know, if we we break the rules, we have to pay the consequences, in my opinion. This beer was all due the consequences that should be completed. Following the code of conduct allegations and investigation, thank you.
Thank you trustee Johann Chanada. I see trustee Murphy, you have your hands up, are you speaking to this, trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm sure none of us signed up for this, having to discipline other trustees. You know, in my opinion, shouldn't be part of our role, but it is, it's legislated that way, we have an obligation and we took an oath to to do this, so. It's not a pleasant situation, but we have to take the responsibility on. You know, the easiest thing would be to turn a blind eye, but that's not the right thing to do, so, so this is why we're here today. We all as trustees, you know. The comment I think was made earlier that freedom of speech and you can say what you want, you you can't say what you want. Especially as an elected official, we took an oath and we have an obligation and we have a code of conduct and policies that we adhere to. You can't yell fire in a movie theater, you can't say the defamatory things. About fellow trustees and the board that you were elected to support. We're held, we're held to a higher standard. Especially when we're we're putting ourselves forward representing this this organization. In my opinion, there there was harm done to the board, there was harm done to fellow trustees. Reputations. This notion that, you know. It was brought up that, you know, it's it's the Catholic thing to do is is to defend. Certain principles at all costs. The notion that the ends justifies the means at all costs. Maybe that's, that's an exception, you know, or or during extreme situations, that is something that is justified. We're not in that situation. It's not justified within our board, it's a disservice to our chaplaincy. To the hard work and dedication of all of our. Our parents, our our students. Our teachers, our staff. To have those dispersions cast upon them. Our focus is to to promote student achievement and this to me is off the mark. And gone to the extremes. When I look through the the report, in my opinion, there was, there was two events that would warrant a written warning. And two events that I felt are grievous and would warrant being would be being barred from meetings. I would put forward to my fellow trustees that we remove the October fourth. Barring from the meeting and to me, that's fair and equitable, but I'll leave that up to to other trustees to give their opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you trustee Murphy. I I hear that you are asking to remove October fourth, twenty twenty two.
Correction, Mr. Chair, I gave my opinion that it should be removed, I didn't move a motion at this time. If if after I hear from my fellow trustees, I may may move a motion at that time.
Would you like to do a friendly amendment?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so let's go around the table and find out from trustees what they think. Is that what your suggestion?
No, during the course of discussion, it, I'll, I'll take the temperature of the room.
Okay.
And then we, I can make a decision from there, I'm just putting forward to my fellow trustees that this is my opinion and then it's up to them to to provide their opinion if they wished.
Thank you trustee Murphy, we have a speakers list, we have trustee Johann Chanada back on the list, trustee Johann Chanada, you spoke there, so should I give, I'll give other trustees an opportunity and come back to you. Trustee, trustee O'Brien, you're next on the list, trustee O'Brien, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I thank you trustee Murphy for that idea about October fourth, I certainly consider that. As I said before, I do not believe, in my opinion, there was a breach. That trustee Carabella was holding the board accountable to the multi-year strategic plan. So I cannot support this motion as it is now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next on the speakers list, we have trustee Guzzo, trustee Guzzo, you're the floor.
I thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm, you know, I'm open to listening and having discussions, that's what we do. I I have to agree with what trustee Murphy said in. Freedom of speech doesn't mean you get to say everything. I I I keep hearing and it keeps getting thrown around, whether directly or indirectly, about how Catholic or Catholic beliefs and. Each individual has their own right to how they practice and how they see Catholic. Being Catholic doesn't mean you get to pass judgment and say things and why their motives are. It's really hard to sit here, we have sat here for the last three and a half years, a lot has transpired at this table. But at the end of the day, I can honestly say that. The mudslinging doesn't leave this board table. It hasn't gone to the public, it hasn't gone, and that's not our role with constituents and and I know, you know, the comment is, you know. I tried to ask it from legal because I I I struggle with it, right, as as a, as a trustee. And fulfilling that role, what is my job, my job is. To support students, support student success, which in turn means constituents. And I try not to make. Doing that political, because it isn't. There's nothing political at education and it's really unfortunate that that's what's happened with it. And. Personal opinions and beliefs. Are one thing. And personal opinions and beliefs are one thing, but to me, I go back and I look at what is most important when it comes to our students and student success, and them getting the best education that they can, and them being treated with respect, and us treating others with respect. And I have to look at that, and I have to look at, at, you know, what does it mean for us moving forward? You know, at the end of the day, if somebody has an issue with the job that's being done, then, then we deal with it. There's ways to deal with it, there's other people to deal with it. But there's no need to do it in a way that diminishes anybody else sitting at the table. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Next up is Vashar Agni. Vashar Agni, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And as the person who brought this forward, without going into the details of the report, I did want to clarify, this is not about the multi-year strategic plan. This is not about items like that. We certainly have those conversations around the table, people who listen to our meetings, who have seen our meetings. We have robust conversations, we don't always agree, we don't need to always agree, we have our points of view, we put our motions forwards, we have those conversations, and we're, we try to be very careful at the table to not disparage each other, to not, to not speak about motives, to not speak about other people's, just, we just not talk about other trustees in, in a personal way. And, and points of orders will point that out. We try to stop that behavior and those conversations from transpiring at the table, because it's not, it's not okay. It's contravening to our policy, it's a contravention of our policy, but it's also not okay. And so the reason that this was brought forward is that there have been communications and correspondence that have been sent out, that have made personal and disparaging remarks against some trustees, and questioned their motives, questioned their upbringing, questioned their morality, questioned their Catholicity, and just questioned their political motivation. And, and that's where, that's where, for me, the challenge sat in this. And so, you know, I just wanted to be clear about that, that I, I think there has been some comments this evening that have been made with respect to the contents of that report, and without seeing the report, I would caution those who are listening to the meeting tonight, that in the absence of actually seeing and reading the report, to, to not make assumptions on, on what is contained within that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vashar Agni. So coming back to trustee Murphy, you had a thought about October 4th?
Yes, I would like to, to move an amendment and strike out October 4th, 2022.
Would you like to move an amendment or a friendly amendment?
We can try a friendly amendment, see, see what happens.
Okay. So trustees, we are, trustee Murphy has put forth the suggestion of moving October 4th. Is there any objection to removing October 4th? Seeing none, and hearing none, trustee Murphy, looks like trustees are in agreement with you. So we'll consider that as friendly amendment and remove October 4th. The motion is in front of us, trustees. I do not, I see trustee Guzzo's hand up. The trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Sorry, because it's a friendly amendment, does, Mr. Chair, does trustee Murphy get to speak to it, or? Okay, because it's a friendly, okay. So I just have a thought, and I'll put this similar to what trustee Murphy did across the table, is, you know, obviously, we've agreed to this friendly amendment, but I do have a concern that, that what happens here tonight is one thing, but that trustees, that we not make comments about other trustees, about what we've had to deal with this past week, because that's part of our code of conduct. So I'm not sure if we need to put that as part of this motion. Because that is, that is a real, it's a legitimate concern, right? It really is a legitimate concern to me. Because when I leave this boardroom, I'm not going to go and make comments, one way or another. The discussion that we're having here is here, and I would hope that no other trustees would do the same. But I, I'm concerned, and, and seeing some of the stuff that I have seen in the press the last couple of days, that that's not necessarily what's going to happen. So I'm just putting it out there to my fellow trustees.
To trustee Guzzo's point here, the last statement here says, as well as issuance of a censure. So trustee Ohern Chanara, could you clarify that? Is the letter going from the chair? Is it something which all trustees should be seeing before I send it out? Or can you clarify that, please?
My thought process there was have an overall letter written to trustee Carabella indicating, you know, this is meant to be corrective action, so my hope is that once we're done and finished with this, you know, there'll be none of these moving forward, that we will follow the policy to strict adherence. So to me, the letter of censure would be, you know, maintaining I-36, reread, please ensure you understand I-36 and ramifications, moving forward, no more contraventions. That's my intent, my.
Thank you, trustee Ohern Chanara. Since I do not see any of the hands up, trustee Ohern Chanara, you get to close discussion.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and to my fellow trustees. Again, you know, I, I just want to reiterate that, you know, as per our policy, and the will of the board is that there has been a breach, the will of the board is that we are going to implement some sanctions, hopefully for corrective action, so that we never have to go through this again, and that we all learn from this, that our policies, we are there to govern, we approve them, so we must live by them. We have times through policies that if we don't understand, or we need clarification, we have the time to ask, so that we walk away from the table, understanding exactly what the policy means, what the bullet points mean, and there's no gray areas. So thank you, and that's all I'm going to say with that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohern Chanara. Seeing no other hands up, I shall now call the vote. Trustee Murphy? In favor. Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohern Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Vashar Agni?
In favor.
And I shall be voting on this, and trustee Duarte is in favor. We have five in favor, one opposed, the motion carries. We do not have any other item on the action item, so we shall move on to the next order of business, which is resolution regarding absentees. We have one trustee who has indicated to us that he would be absent, that's trustee DeRosa. May I have a motion to excuse trustee DeRosa?
I'll move it.
By trustee Ohern Chanara, may I ask for a second there, please? Trustee Murphy, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion to excuse trustee DeRosa carries. Moving on to the next order of business, which is adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? By trustee Ohern, I think for a second there?
Murphy?
Trustee Murphy, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. I will now lead us in a closing prayer, and we'll use the same prayer which we used a couple of days back. Again, it's a prayer for Pope Francis, who is on a potential pilgrimage to meet with our country's indigenous people. Please join me in the sign of our faith as we pray for the success of the pilgrimage of the son, of the spirit. Hail Mary, Lord Grace, the Lord of thee, blessed art thou amongst women, blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us, in us now and at the hour of our death. Glory be to the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Good night, thanks for a great meeting. Good night, everybody.